We call the special meeting of the Water Pollution Control Authority and Town Council meeting to order for Tuesday, April 3, 2018 at 7:13 PM. We'll start first with salute to the flag.
Let's go to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under our individual liberty and justice for all.
Mic? No, I don't think we have mics yet.
Tell us it's on. They told me to hit the record button.
There we go. Now you just, I guess, to the question, well, let's get this to the screen and everything.
Roll call.
Mayor Doody?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni?
Here.
Counselor Candelara?
Here.
Counselor Diamond?
Here.
Counselor Fawnin?
Here.
Counselor Miller?
Here.
Counselor Rose?
Here.
Counselor Viglio? Counselor Zimpann?
Here.
Motion to approve the previous minutes for March 20, 2018, Town Council meeting.
Second.
Any corrections? Roll call.
Mayor Doody?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Candelara?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Zimpann?
Yes.
We'll move into the Water Pollution Control Authority Agenda. First is corresponding citizen statements under Water Pollution Control. Seeing then we'll move into unfinished business. Nothing listed. New business, nothing listed. Citizen statements and petitions under Water Pollution Control Authority. Seeing then we'll move into the regular Town Council Agenda. Reports of committees, board and the commissions, permanent project building committee.
Nothing to report.
Economic Development Commission.
The Economic Development Commission met last night. They had two guest speakers. The first was Sherri Coate from the Executive Director of the Shoreline Chamber of Commerce. She is new on the job. She's been there about three months. Two things that she had reported, two important things is, one, they are looking for a representative from North Bramford for the tourism board. The EDC did have some recommendations that they are going to reach out to to see if anyone is interested in going on that board. And also, there will be a meet and greet for the Shoreline Chamber at Featherly Ever After on May 2nd from 5:30 to 7:30. They also talked about the Little League Opener Earth Day. The EDC will have a table there to hand out information to people as they come to it. They are in the process of updating their website. They're working with the Poco Fest on the Taste of North Bramford, which will be the Thursday night before the festival opens. And they're trying to get more involved in the chamber and more events listed on the chamber website. And the Shoreline Chamber is in the process of updating their website also. So that was it.
Thank you. Park and Recreation Commission.
Park and Recreation met last week. They did approve the Eagle Scout project for bocce courts at the community center. They will be next to the tennis courts that were just done. They also went over, they sent out, Lauren sent out all of the applications to the various leagues in town to submit back to them about field usage when they will need them. And one of the new things that they added this year is that they will need a designated representative for field use that the Park and Rec can contact if there's any issues with the fields. Their spring and summer brochure is out, which has their kids camp in it. One of the promotional ideas or things that they're using this year for kids camp is that if, when parents sign up, if they prepay by the end of April, they will get one week of kids camp free. At this time, they're also going to hold off on the part-time cook position because there are a lot of new regulations that they have to get trained in. So they're going to hold off on that and get training for the people there. And they're going to spend the money on, from the part-time cook in that area so that they're fully in compliance. And then they did a walk-through of the facility after their meeting to start developing, like, their five-year capital plan.
That was it. Police Commission.
Police Commission will meet this Monday, April 9.
Fire Commission didn't have a meeting yet this long. Board of Education, Town Council Communication Subcommittee?
No meeting.
Town Planning Goals Subcommittee?
Town Planning Goals Subcommittee met on March 27. We're in the process of trying to develop a format for a five-year plan for both equipment and infrastructure needs within the town. We also met with Kerry Marola and had a very interesting discussion about this needs and how to equip the infrastructure hopefully for our next meeting on, on May 15. And I think I'd like to say something with her, Jane.
Thank you.
Public Safety Communications.
No meeting.
Planning and zoning commission?
No meeting.
Next is Town Managers' Report. Review of proposal for Mark Deming re-energy savings.
Yes, you have a correspondence from Mr. Deming in your packet. I just wanted to bring that to your attention. You know, we've discussed it before, and I don't expect any action tonight, but could certainly bring this back for the next meeting on the 17th if the council would like to pursue it. I am also having, had a meeting, held a meeting today with Kerry Duquez with some solar company that's doing a large project for the Regional Water Authority and also had done another project in Simsbury. We're exploring the whole solar programs and trying to make that as part of this analysis going forward, and I think it merits further review. I think there's a possibility that with solar and LED lighting town-wide, both municipal buildings and, and school buildings, that I think the town could have some relative success pursuing those two components of an energy conservation program. I think this might be the straightforward, low-hanging fruit, if you will, for something to take a look at. So I'm just bringing this, this came in before the agenda was put together, so I had an opportunity to put this before you to take a look at, and if the council would like to pursue Mr. Deming on a consultant basis, that's fine, we can explore that.
So we have a proposal before us for $12,000, and we're to do work for the town, and we're not putting it out to bid? We're not doing an RFP?
My question is, are these two separate proposals? Because one says Board of Ed buildings on it, and the other one is just blank.
I started reading it was two separate ones.
But they were, sorry, I was just...
I, yeah, I haven't had a chance to talk to Mark yet, but I see it as two separate proposals in terms of not knowing where the, where the council wants to go, if they just want to explore municipal buildings, or if they want to put Board of Ed together as well. But certainly, together, combined, they are over the threshold and would have to be bid out. But on its, separately, that's basically a quote.
Well, according, according to this and to what I read, we had, we had a company come in and give a presentation of doing an assessment of energy for, for the community that cost us no money until such time as we made decisions based on their recommendations. And now we have one that commits us to $12,000 for informational reports, no work whatsoever, no, no changes to our infrastructure. So this is just wrong.
Director, I think you mistook that. I think you mistook that. This is a quote to go in there and tell us what we have to take care of. The other one was a quote, and they're going to take money. They're not, they're not doing it for free, the other company. They're taking a percentage.
From the savings.
They're taking, they're still taking a percentage. You're still going to pay. The town's going to pay one way or another.
This is, this is suggesting that we're going to pay as much as $12,000, and it commits to even more.
Right, and then your savings is going to be 100%. Whatever you, whatever you do, your savings is going to be 100%. You're not going to pay a company that's going to take your savings. Your, your savings is going to be your savings to put in an account to redo lighting, redo everything. I already told you, there's $39,000 left on the table. He spoke to me the other day, and you know, your libraries are lit up 24 hours a day? On the weekends? Your libraries are lit up 24 hours a day? He says, why is that? Because we have no switches that turn off, and they, they don't detect motion or anything else like that, so our lights are on.
No, I'm not, I'm not...
The other, the other energy company's not going to come in and say, you know, this is how...
I'm not addressing that. I'm addressing the presentation of the $12,000 commitment, which puts us over the threshold of what we should have put out on our page and, and send to the proposals.
Well, it's different, because the school is different than the town, so it's not going to be a one-shot deal.
Well, I think it's wrong, and I'll tell you that for free.
I think you're dead wrong, and that's for free.
Yeah, I just, you know, this wasn't a solicitation. It just came in and obviously needs further review. And I agree with Counselor Miller that it's over the threshold unless he's going to separate and submit and, and/or if the council decides that you want a demonstration project first. For example, I spent time with, because the mayor just brought this up with, with the library, I spent time with the director this morning looking, and, and with Kenny Ashen Public Works, looking at the light fixtures and the arrangement that they have there and, and the heat pump, I mean, the geothermal as well, that draws off a lot of electricity for the, for the heat pumps. So, you know, there is, I think, an opportunity in carving out, just looking at the Atwater Library, to say, why don't we make this a demonstration project? Let's see if we can implement a lighting program and potentially solar program to offset the geothermal and, and the energy being used in the, in the heat pumps, and see if, if on a small scale, we can get this right, and then expand from there. That's, I'm just throwing that out there. I think there's an opportunity, and I think the council hopefully would like to see something in a small-scale success that we can scale and be successful throughout the town, on both the municipal side and the Board of Ed side. I was just merely passing this along, not asking you to take action tonight, but just as a point of information. And I will certainly get whatever question, you know, information on whatever you need to look at, but I think we should have a further discussion for the meeting, the meeting on the 17th of April. And I would propose we, we scale down and look at a demonstration project like Atwater. Just, just my thoughts.
Well, we'll just carry it over to the next meeting. Next is Human Events Presentations. Nothing's listed. Citizen Statements, Petitions and Correspondence. Resignations, Appointments. Appointment of Carolyn Candelara from the BOE to the Pension Committee.
So move.
She's already done?
No, this, this appointment is to make her the permanent member. She's an alternate right now.
Okay, second.
This makes her the permanent. Can the minutes reflect that it's the permanent position on the Board of Ed, permanent position on the Pension Committee?
Permanent position on the Pension Committee?
Pension Committee, yes.
Mayor Doody?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Candelara?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Zimpann?
Yes.
Next is unfinished business, discussion in action, approved proposal 2017-1, Chapter 40 entitled Fire Department Fees Stable Until July. Next is the Future Budget Planning Initiative.
No items.
Next is Review of Ethics Ordinance.
Uh, nothing. I've not completed it yet. I should have it by next meeting.
Next is Review of Board of Educational Rules and Policies and Procedures. Yeah, it's really addressed that. Move into new business, discussion in action. The Potato and Corn Festival 2018 requests a whole special event for beer and wine.
Yeah, this is for their Sunday program, and I know that Lauren and Jen are also here, the coordinator for the Poco Festival. I had indicated, I think, at the last meeting that I wanted to check and look at our liability. That's been cleared from the insurance company, as this is a part of the festival's event. We are covered, there's no issues there with respect to insurances. Jen has also done some research for the permitting of the event. We will need a one-day permit that we need to fill out and submit to the state. Other than that, it's now just a decision of the council to authorize and to allow it to take place. And they are here to answer any questions that you may have.
I would like to hear from Jen and Alex, or whoever, just to give us more information rather than from what's in our packet.
Hello. So, we started looking into this. Obviously, Alex has a farm in town, and he has been doing some brewing and things like that for the wine and beer and whiskey, which we won't have there, don't worry. But, so basically, we're looking at this as a really great way to showcase some of the local agriculture, since it is an agricultural event. And I believe you said you're going to have a table that has all the different ingredients and kind of like the process of how the ingredients turn into beer and things like that, and create a locally-made beer as well? Working on that. Sorry, were you going to say something?
Nope.
Okay. So we're going to approach local breweries and wineries. A lot of them do events like this, just to kind of bring awareness to their brands and draw people into their own breweries and vineyards and things like that. So we just thought that would be a, a nice fit as far as kind of, Connecticut's really kind of on the head of the whole craft beer initiative, as well as the wine, so...
And, uh, why, I pass with you, it's just a, a couple main points of what we want to do there, what's going to occur, timing, location. The garden pass that you see there, essentially, just like a note card that you see right here, I'll have a list of all the different tables there, and, um, yeah. I'll have a list of all the different tables there, so they can get stamped off. It's very controlled, the sampling. I know last year we talked about this, and this year as well, the samplings are mouthfuls. We, we took the main design that we saw that the Dermond Fair Wine Tasting has done over the past so many years, and the tables generally have three or four products in between all the products. They explain the ingredients, there's history behind it, so you have time in between that of when people are sampling. They're getting educated by where the product comes from, the farms that get utilized for the product, so it's really agricultural first, as the Poco Fest is. And the nice thing with it, that we mentioned before, we have the vineyards and breweries up and coming in our state, and you have one of the first hopyards in the state. We're almost right across from the Potato Fest grounds. So you get agricultural when people come in, they see that, you have two vineyards in town that I'm sure that'd love to be part of this, so I think it would be a great addition to draw people into the Potato Fest. And we can easily approach the, the wine trail and the beer trail to help advertise the Tape Fest as well by having breweries and vineyards on this, so...
Okay, so did you scale back, in our little memo, it says from two to six, but you scaled it back to two to four? Is this a two-hour event? On this sheet, it says two to four, that you just ceded out, and our memo says two to six, so...
Yeah, so last year, we're playing up ideas. We figured for the first year, keep it small. We figure a half hour before-after for setup and breakdown. That way, it's small, it's not a huge festival. See how this year goes. Success, we could expand in the future years.
We're going to be using that tent, too. The idea, we have a couple different ideas that we're tossing around. One of them was a photography exhibit, so the tent won't just be sitting there empty for the rest of the weekend, so that would obviously be closed of general public during that time, but then the tent's just not sitting empty, plus it would kind of give it a kind of cool look with photos and stuff as decor.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you.
So, do we need a motion to approve this so that they can move ahead with it? Is that...
Certainly, I think that would be appropriate.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to allow the Poco Fest to have a beer and wine garden on Sunday, August 5th from 2:00 to 4:00 PM.
Sir? Discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Doody?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Candelara?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Next day.
Counselor Zimpann?
Yes.
Congratulations, you can move ahead.
Now, instead of abstaining and participating, or...
Next is bid award for RFP number two, 2017-18 bulk food and paper goods.
Yes, there's a memo in your packet from Michelle Knappwood. I sat down with Michelle and Lauren to go through this, and the recommendation is to go with Thurston Foods as the low bidder, based on the responses.
I'd like to make a motion to approve RFP number two, 2017-18 bulk food and paper goods awarded to Thurston Foods.
Second.
Mayor Doody?
Discussion, anybody have any discussion?
I'm sorry?
Normally, when we get a RFP response, we get some values with it, so we would have some idea of what, how much money we're committing to and what the separation was between the bidders. There's nothing here.
Yeah, there's, this particular bid, again, this was one that came up that we were on a threshold of knowing that we were just over the 75, 100, and that we, through an analysis, decided that this should come before the council to send out to bid. Three bidders, and a lot of it was on a unit basis price, and that was what took us so long in terms of comparing the different prices for various food items per pound and the, obviously, the quality. And I don't have the exact figure, but maybe, Michelle is here, and I believe Lauren is here. I'm not sure that there was much separation, but that one of the key factors were the fact that Thurston has a relationship with, with the town already, and the health regulations are changing with respect to delivery of food and being inspected as it's delivered in terms of temperatures and so forth. So there's a lot more regulations involved, and I think there's a, a higher comfort level beyond the price and the track record with Thurston to deliver in a timely fashion and the quantities that we need. But I don't have the particulars prices. We can, we can get that breakdown unless they remember.
Roll call.
Mayor Doody?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Candelara?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
No.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Zimpann?
Yes.
And next is update on North Bramford Indian Union School of Roof Repairs.
There was a request to update you on the balance that we had spent towards the roof repairs at this school. Again, the total budget was $294,000, roughly $48,500 we spent in '16, '17, and $17,000 this year. $228,000 the balance as of the day this report was created, but I might remind you in that bottom of that memo, this is a fluid project, and since this memo came in, another $6,000 of the bills came in. So I would strongly advise counting that as surplus at this point until we get further into the project and identify potential other issues that may need to be addressed before we look to reassign that money.
Thank you. Update on self-insurance.
Self-insurance, again, update was requested, and I included for you the calculation that was done for the risk corridor financing for the current year. At that time, the risk corridor was about $970,000. That's 120% of the estimated claims. We had funded 86% currently, about $834,000 we put into the risk corridor, and each 1% we wanted to increase that to be about $9,700. Subsequently, on the current year, our expected claims in our risk corridor now is over $1 million. So it might be worth readdressing or revisiting. I gave you the, second page is the trial balance in that fund as of 3/28. And this, the cash on hand is $805,000. So we had put $834 aside to be our cushion, and we begin into that now, we've got about $805,000 as our balance in that risk cor, in that self-insurance reserve. Mike and I had met today, we met last week with some other folks. We're still trying to get a handle on the various health insurance options for the town for July 1st. The state has not put numbers out yet for their partnership plan. We've met with folks from Antrim, we met with our broker today, some creative ways to try to minimize our costs and get a nice product in place that everybody would be happy with. But it's still a work in process, and hopefully we'll have some numbers shortly. Our negotiations start tomorrow with various unions, so we're hoping to have some finite numbers, but I don't think we're going to have the time for negotiations.
So approximately what percent of increase are we looking at from...
20.1.
Okay.
That's what we factor into the budgets. That's the worst case, that's the worst it'll be. Any changes we make to improve on that will come off of that, so it won't go higher than that on the PPO plan. So if we, again, we're waiting for the numbers from the state on the partnership plan, but we have the deductible health plan. The issue we're trying to wrestle with now is how do we fund that deductible? Do we do an HSA? Do we do an HRA? Do we do some combination of both of those? How do we do that to save the town the most money?
So when you say, so the PPO is 20.1, but that's still, it's the same on the HDHP, the 20.1?
Yeah, we'll have numbers, we're waiting for firm numbers on that. There'll be a little bit of reduction, and you get a factor in the funding for the deductible as well if we do that HSA velocity. So again, we're looking at, do the HSA?
Well, because the Board of Ed has already moved over to an HDHP?
Correct. Correct.
For one of their largest groups, so did that 20.1% go over to their HDHP also?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, that was my question, if there was a difference between the PPO and the HDHP.
No, so unfortunately, our claims are driving the bus this year.
Okay.
More questions? Okay, next is update on extra duty billing for MBPD.
You had asked for an update on the extra duty police billing. There were currently five at the time I did this memo. One has since paid, the Dan Studio did pay as of today. The Cheshire High School, is listed as Cheshire High School. Ultimately, it was determined that Hand High School was the responsible party. The paperwork that came down from the DV had Cheshire as the billable party after the bill was sent, and several phone calls and letters back and forth. And finally, they have determined that Daniel Hand High School was the responsible party. We've since contacted the Daniel Hand, the athletic director, and they're looking to go back, suspect a couple of years, and they're trying to figure out exactly the mechanics of how it fell apart. The Eversource, they pay us, it's just a very slow pay. Godet Construction is one that was doing the work on Mill Road that we developed down by the waterfall. And the corporate town attorney was successful in getting a small claims court injunction against him, but we have not seen any money. And Toys R Us, obviously filed a bankruptcy. And the confusion, we hypothesized there was that it was North Branford billing them and the stores in North Ave. It was a Black Friday a couple of years back. As happens all the time, our cops do jobs in North Ave, and North Ave does jobs in our town, vice versa. So when North Branford sent them a bill at corporate, they had no correlation of why North Branford police would be in their store in North Ave, I imagine. So again, we have a claim unfiled with the bankruptcy court. Whether we get any money on that one remains to be seen, but we did file paperwork for a claim.
I've got a question. I want to go back to the healthcare.
Yes, sir.
So I'm having a hard time understanding how we're self-insured and it's going up 20%. So we're self-insured, we fund, we pay all of our expenses. We hire Anthem, Blue Cross to manage the account.
Correct.
And our risk corridor, our, you know, our $900,000 we put in there to pay when we have extremely sick people and we're going to pay more than we thought. So why, why are we going up 20%?
Well, the current plan, the design, is that we have $100,000 stop loss. Means we responsible for the first $100,000 that everybody individually claims. And unfortunately, this past year, we've had some, we had some folks who exceeded that. So when they exceed that, Anthem pays those bills. So Anthem is now sitting up.
So the 20% just on the stop loss insurance?
20% is on the aggregate total expected claims. If you say you've got a million dollars in claims, let's say, the worst case would be that 120% of that number would be, say, a million two, whatever the number ends up being, $1,200,000. If you go above that, that's in the aggregate stop loss kick-in. So between the million and the million two, that's the risk corridor. My example doesn't tie into the numbers, but that's the difference. And we funded 86% of that gap, and we're now we're beating into that gap. So it's just a factor that our employees and their families and so on exceeded that $100,000 enough time where Anthem is now saying, hey, we need that money back.
So to, to actually save money being self-insured, should we go up on that $250,000 or $200,000? These like half million dollar claims.
I don't know the specifics of individual claims, too. We don't get that detailed information. So it might be, there might be some really catastrophic ones that are, you know, several hundred thousand of dollars. We don't get that level of detail.
So who picked the $100,000 cap?
That was, we went in very conservative to make from the beginning, because we'd want to have a great exposure. $100,000 was a safe number, we thought. Looking at that, the ACs.
So what I'm getting to is, we may end up the year with, and who knows, it's a long ways till July 1st.
Correct.
The $800,000 we have in the bank, we may have $600 left. So if we went up on the, I'll figure out, where's the balance between 20% on the whole thing versus, you know, hey, we paid another $50,000 per?
Right. It's unfortunately, there's no science to it, the means we had today. You know, we're trying to figure out how do we solve that deductible? Well, if you know everybody was going to be very healthy and have minimal claims, it's a home run.
Right.
What percentage of the people are going to pass that threshold of $100,000? It's totally, every year could be different.
Okay.
So there's no, there's no science to it. It's either lucky, or you're unlucky. But honestly, it's a gamble.
Okay.
Moving on, contingency appropriation of $60,000 for public works tree removal.
At the budget session of last week, there was discussion with Mr. Merold about the eminent problem that he has with tree removal. And after discussing with him the appropriate amount to ask you folks for in the current year, the number of $60,000 was, was what his best estimate was that would address him through June 30th to address all the damaged trees as a result of these storms that have been happening. So we're looking for a contingency appropriation of $60,000.
I'd like to make a motion that the town manager is hereby authorized to appropriate from reserve for contingency account number 101, 4703, 7600000, and transfer into the appropriate accounts as soon as possible for the following purpose. Tree removal for public works, $60,000.
Second. Discussion.
Mayor Doody?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Candelora?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Miller?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Councilor Zampano?
Yes.
In your packet also, on the back pages today, you can see some of the complaints, the locations, the various roads that have issues that have been identified to help the works.
Next is review and approval of RFP number 10, 2017-2018 Pension Investment Advisor Services.
This is the RFP that we've kicked around for a little bit now. Again, set it up for the town council after the late revisions, the pension committee. There've been some minor modifications and corrections made. This is the product we want to hit the street with. And discussing with pension committee chairman, Mr. Fawnin, he suggested we get this out there sooner rather than later. So it's for you folks for approval to get on the street.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So to point out to us at a previous meeting that perhaps some information in there that's outdated, has that been updated, or?
No, that part of the, part of the RFP calls for the successful person to help us update the business policy statement.
So you feel as it is now, it's, people are going to be on it as it is?
Yeah. If there's any other comments they want to make, we can certainly capture them before it hits the streets, but if not, I suggest we just move it out and.
I'd like to make a motion to approve RFP number 10, 2017-18 Pension Investment Advisor Services.
Second. Discussion.
Mayor Doody?
Yes.
Mayor, Deputy Mayor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Candelora?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Miller?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Councilor Big Leal?
Yes.
Councilor Zampano?
Yes.
Next, citizen statements and petitions.
I just want to comment on, just. My name is Art Kaplan, 15 Dogwood Road, North Branford. I just want to comment on the decision to go forward with Thurston Foods Company. I've got 40 years of food service and healthcare, or food service, and I've dealt with the family for several years, and they pride themselves with quality product, service, and price. So I think the decision to go with them, stay with them is a very good decision.
Thank you.
Is that moved?
Second. Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Candelora?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Miller?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Councilor Big Leal?
Yes.
Councilor Zampano?
Yes.
Call the budget hearing for 2018-2019 Special Town Council Meeting for Water for Tuesday, April 3rd, 2017, at 8:06 p.m. We'll start first with salute to the flag.
(audience) Let us lead this to the fight of the United States of America, and to revive the Christian faith, and to bring peace and under God, and to fulfill the living justice of our own.
Mayor Doody?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni?
Here.
Councilor Candelora?
Here.
Councilor Diamond?
Here.
Councilor Fawnin?
Here.
Councilor Miller?
Here.
Councilor Rose?
Here.
Councilor Big Leal?
Here.
Councilor Zampano?
Here.
Next, I have this presentation of fiscal year 2018-2019 budget versus town managers.
Thank you, and.
Thank you, and good evening. I've got a PowerPoint presentation I'm going to walk you through. And first, part of it is about budget process, and let me say first and foremost that this year is a little bit better than last year only because of the uncertainty in the state revenue that didn't come for several months after we put together a budget. We have numbers this year, so that makes it a little bit easier. But the budget process obviously sets priorities by allocating scarce resources. My role is to review the requests submitted by departments, make the adjustments, and submit those proposals to the town council. I do not have a role in the board of education budget, just strictly on the municipal side. So the town council, after I hand off, the town council will have to review a proposal, hold workshops that they've held, and also public hearings like tonight, and make the final adjustments to the budget, and schedule a referendum vote in then. So that's how our process works, and I'm here to take you through some of the issues. Certainly, as I mentioned, the uncertainty of the government budget and the state revenue. Unfunded mandates are always a pressure for us. One of the latest, I mean, we talked about future pensions last year that's still off the table now, but could still be kicking around. MS4 is a municipal waste, solid waste issue, I mean, storm drain issue for collection of storm drains and so forth is relatively expensive for us, right, each and every town. And there are always mandates popping up every year, but CCM and our membership with CCM and costs help us navigate those particular issues to fight as much as we need to in Hartford to try and negate those mandates. Local issues, obviously, we're trying to maintain services and infrastructure when our costs are escalating like everyone else's. And so there are pressures from the departments to increase staffing, to make, you know, to meet the resident service demands and tasks as mandated by the state. The unfortunate problem is, the budget challenge is, we are in a climate of a negative trend in revenue. As you can see, top to bottom, from fiscal year 14 to 15 to 18, 19, we've lost $2 million. We've had a reduction in $2 million approximately in just five short years. So it's a problem, it's a negative trend, and it only leads in one direction, and that is local. So we've got just difficult decisions that we do every year in terms of the budget and trying to balance, and it actually makes difficult decisions for the council as well, so they can try to do the best that they can to prepare and deliver a fair budget and a fair tax rate. So the highlights, we've got a total increase of 4.12. Town's operating side at 3.18 as currently proposed. Board of Education, which you'll hear from next, 4.48%. Our debt service is helping us this year, it's down 0.5%, a little over 5%. And I'll have more on that, but those are the highlights. These are the numbers. These are how they break down. We're looking at, on the municipal side, an increase of $473,024. Debt service, as I said, helps us, it's decreased $218,000. That started, that drop started last year, continues through this year, so that helps. Education is up 1.3. Our capital improvements, I'm going to talk a little bit later on in the presentation, there's significant increase there for planning purposes, and this is as a proposal to try and do some catch-up with our capital improvements. So in total, we're looking at just over $2 million and a 4.12% increase. So revenues to finance, as the state revenue drops off, it shifts that burden to the town. And the grand list is what we, we look at to derive our taxes. So every bit of growth that we can squeeze out of the grand list helps, but as you can see, 0.87% is positive, but it's not nearly enough to offset any decrease in state revenue from the state. So an increase on the bottom there, we're talking about, you know, would add, it does add about $360,000. So, you know, we'd need something like, you know, 5% or more in grand list growth, which is, would be phenomenal, and almost unheard of and almost impossible unless we had some huge developments going on. So we do what we can with respect to the grand list growth and the Economic Development Commission doing what it can to help, and just natural, you know, expansion and additions help, but it just can't make up the difference. Again, here is, here is the shift, if you will, looking at what was 72.41% in fiscal year 11, 12, to now 80% projected for 18, 19. We do have some tools. Fund balance is one of them, decrease in debt service the other, to try to offset those increases. And obviously, the town council has been very disciplined in its approach and use, very conscious of how they use fund balance and try to offset, mitigate those increases. And we adhere to a hard and fast rule of not violating the recommendations from the rating agencies to dip below a certain percentage of fund balance. Just like being disciplined to pay the debt service, we're not going to rate fund balance below the rating agency's recommendations. So, and this year includes, again, I'll mention it later, is in terms of capital, there's a significant amount earmarked for a capital improvement. So other revenues really aren't going to help us with respect to interest income, although interest rates may begin to climb at some point. Permanent revenue, you know, again, projected to be flat. We could see a spike, that would be, you know, that could happen, and we do have cycles. Real estate conveyance tax, again, the same. We did have a large increase last year, but that's not something that you can bank on. So those aren't going to be of much help to us. So expenditure summary, again, we're looking at, on the general government side, $473,024 or 3.18%. And the department requests came in or were cut or adjusted by over $569,000. That's just sort of an indicator of what comes in and what demands we have or what requests we have. Our funding level is going to try to allow us to do the status quo a little bit more with the funding of capital items and debt service. Those are. Those are, so the three, the three main drivers within our general government, obviously, our personnel costs are benefits and insurance, and wages, benefits, insurance. But some of the other drivers in the overall budget, obviously, are debt service and capital plan. So, I can't really, I can't really account for debt service and capital improvement and the general government side, but in the total government, total proposal, that's where the debt service helps, but it's still something we have to, we just don't discontinue debt service. It's reduction, that helps us, that's great. But what we're focused on this year, and what's different about this year, is that last line item there for capital improvement. $829,000 is really something aimed at trying to do catch-up with some of the large capital items that we have. So, again, I mentioned capital, so we have approximately $1,230,000 allocated, $830,000 within budgeted funds, $400,000 in the fund balance, and essentially, this is to do public safety equipment, police and fire apparatus in terms of going into equipment reserve or whatever they, whatever they need, public works and road improvements. So, when we get to, you know, what we're trying to do within road improvements is to prolong and extend the life of a road before it gets too far gone, and it's much more costly to have to reconstruct a road than it is if we're out there doing proper maintenance. But there's only so many miles that you can do in a given year, and it's only so far, 500,000 will only go so far. If we can develop a plan to stay on top of this, I think we would certainly help with our maintenance program and staying on top of that. So, capital purchases allow us, you know, to address the unidentified capital improvement needs, and they're all big-ticket items. So, I think a systematic approach to putting something in the budget each and every year and putting it aside, think of it as a pension contribution, think of it as debt service, something that you want to fund each and every year so that you can, you're not hit with these and something you have to bond or issue a bond for, you know, a ladder truck or a pumper or something like that, or you've got to reissue, just two years ago, the bond for the road program to do road improvements. And you can't do that every year, but if we were systematic in our approach and discipline, we can put money in each year and try to build the pot up and pay cash for some of these items. So, debt service, as I mentioned, has come down, started to come down, and it's down again this year, so that certainly helps the numbers. Proposed tax rate at this point, 34.97, that's an increase of 1.46 mils, a 4.35 percent increase over the current rate. So, if you're trying to do the math, how is the impact, we put this slide in every year, is it just an example of if you had a colonial home and if you had a raised ranch, what that impact out of pocket would be in terms of dollars and cents? 353 for the colonial, 292 for the raised ranch. And that's just for illustrative purposes only. Obviously, it's case-specific, but we try to give an idea of what that would mean. So, 1 mil equals $1,229,277. So, you know, we're just trying to do the best we can, be fair, and, you know, give the council the opportunity to set priorities and direction for the town. And that's it for me, and next up is Scott Shoemaker, Superintendent. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The council had an opportunity to look at our budget last week, so we are going to go through a bridge version of our current budget, and we're going to show it in two different forms, a status quo and then the Board of Ed requested budget. Don Winkett, Business Manager, will walk you through parts of that budget, and if there are any questions or comments, we'll be open to them at the close.
So, as Scott mentioned, the status quo budget, which is what's required to maintain our current staffing, current programs, requires an increase of 3.85 percent over the current year. The board's request is 4.48 percent because it includes some new positions. Major contributions to the increase are 2.43 percent for salaries, 1.18 percent for benefits, 0.37 for special ed tuition, and 0.33 for utilities. And so this is just that breakdown in a little bit more detail. You can see that the status quo increase is about 1.19 million, and the board's request is about 1.39 billion. So, the difference between the status quo and the board's request is about 0.63 percent. Major cost factors, salary increase is largely due to the teacher's contract and an additional third of a percent for 2.7 FTE of certified staff. That's a total increase of about half a million dollars. That includes all of our staffing except one teacher, back two teachers using grant funds. For non-certified salaries, the increase is about $250,000. And health insurance costs, this is, this was alluded to in the council meeting earlier, this is a little bit disappointing because often this will come down a bit at this point in time, but the way our experience is running, that has not happened yet. So, we have about 0.85 percent baseline increase in the benefits and another 0.15 or 0.16 percent for the positions for a total of a little over $300,000. This is just basically the things that were rolled into this budget. Many of the asking contracts are now settled, but it still includes assumptions for the paraprofessional contract. It does not include Title I funding. It does increase, it does include an increase of about $60,000 for variety software applications, and it includes another $100,000 for electric costs, which is about a 7 percent adjustment in usage, and 13.4 percent in cost per kilowatt hour. That cost per kilowatt hour increases largely on the UI side of town. And this, again, is just a breakdown of some of the other numbers, $63,000 in base transportation plus $18,000 for diesel fuel. But we did off, we did eliminate one Type I vehicle in the budget, and there was also, we were also able to take a $30,000 adjustment in school day special ed transportation costs. Outside placements increased by $115,000, and they are budgeted at full cost, that is, there is no reduction for the excess cost grant payments. Pay-to-play revenues remain at $40,000, and the next slide will show enrollment, which is a decrease of about 43 students, and that also includes an increase in the number of pre-K students. So, in terms of new staffing requested, we have coaches for English Language Arts and Math at the K-5 level, we're looking to expand that to the 612 level. That's the professional development model that the state really is asking everyone to use. It also adds, we currently have a preschool classroom that's funded by a grant. This adds a preschool teacher and paraprofessional from board funds to add a second classroom. Adds a K-2 school librarian, and increases high school communications by 0.2. It eliminates one NBIS classroom position, one TVDS music position, there are two of those, so we're not eliminating music at TVDS. Reducing our rural language offerings grade 612 by 0.4 FTE, which is actually a shuffle, it's about a 1 FTE decrease at the high school, and that's picked up at the middle school, 0.6 of it is picked up at the middle school to offer Spanish throughout the eighth grade. Reduces health by 0.1, and also includes the upgrade of four paraprofessional positions to a specialist category where they would be trained as behavior technicians. What I did this time, I, the first time you saw this slide, it was a lot of information on one slide, this really just summarizes, over the last 10 years, our regular ed teaching staff has gone from 155 to 133, special ed has remained fairly constant, total paraprofessionals are actually up a bit, and other employees are flat except for the fact that we added 10 positions for security a number of years ago. There are some other things that would be valuable to the school district, construction and technology teacher. We would also like to put in K-5 coaches at science and, in science and social studies, a gifted and talented teacher, and increasing the substitute per D M rate. None of that is in this budget. And finally, this is a slide for capital, which we had originally requested, but I see that has been adjusted in the, in the orange book in front of you, and the only things that are remaining in that request are the auditory brick and the replacement truck. And that's it.
We'll open up the public hearing on the fiscal year 2018-2019 budget. Somebody wants to speak?
My name is Art Kaplan, 2004, North Bradford. My focus this evening is on the proposed budget, which is, in the past, subjected the residents of our town to yearly increase taxes. The town council, also serving as the Finance Board, is responsible for stabilizing town expenditures by managing our tax dollars. Both the Republicans, Democrats, and we, the townspeople, need to see representatives of both parties arrest spending and flatline the budget. Taking money from the rainy day fund should not be an option. If there is no money in the checkbook, then check writing must stop. It's safe to say that many of us are not as well versed in government finances as those serving on the municipal governing councils or the Finance Board of the town, and must rely on their ability to do just that. The binders of the proposed budgets are readily available to residents for review and reference. The truth of the matter is, only a small percentage of those receiving the budget proposal binders are able to decipher its information. You are elected to manage the taxes we pay. The council and Finance Board are responsible to research a solution to, again, flatline the budget. The term "flatline" I use refers to a no increase in taxes. Blindly moving money from one line to another is inappropriate, and as some members of the council have stated, must stop. One Democrat serving on the council at the October 25, 2017 public hearing said, "We talk, talk, and talk, but we need to act, act, and act." Referendums are held yearly following budget presentations to approve or reject a proposed budget. In order for the referendum to vote down the budget, I understand 15 percent of registered voters must vote to determine whether the budget passes or is rejected. For many years, only 15 percent of the required number of registered voters attending the referendum had voted one way or the other, and it's not enough to challenge the consistency of increased taxes. The young men who moved in into the community do not understand taxes and fail to participate in the process of expressing their rejection to a tax increase. The senior population who have witnessed tax increases and have unsuccessfully challenged the budget have given up because as years go by, fewer and fewer voters turn out along the budget pass. I ask when and where and when does it stop? People are voting out, not that that matters because the taxes still have to be paid by the homeowners, but the property maintenance declines and property values depreciate. Many of us, our long-term residents, myself included since 1973, have seen our taxes increase yearly and have said on occasion, "How much longer can I afford to live in North Bradford?" But we continue to absorb this burden of increased taxes, and it must come to a point when we expect our local governing officials to step up and put the brakes on overspending and tightening controls of expenditures. The town council and Finance Board needs to take hard stands and stabilize expenditures by arresting spending and tightening budget until finances can afford and support such expenditures. In letters to the editor of the Tetera Times dated November 3, 2017, the Republican candidates for the town stated that they believe in these economic times, the town should not be adding positions in growing government. North Bradford needs to live within its means like those residents who lose their jobs and have to rely on social security. Several of the town council members whose comments were printed in the Tetera Times currently sit on the board, and because it is now a confirmed Republican majority council, these members should exert every effort according to the previous comments in addressing spending and flatlining the budget. Several Democratic candidates made similar comments, finding themselves immersed in a financial situation the town finds itself in. With reduction in funding by the state and federal government, our taxes will go even higher with additional supplemental taxes. It was noted this morning on the news, the state is facing a $217-plus million deficit, which means even less money will be available for municipal funding. Let the residents, taxpayers, and you, the municipal leaders of North Bradford, be at the forefront of tightening our goals with this budget. Let those in attendance and those watching reject any budget that calls for even a slight increase in taxes. If we are operating a deficit, it's up to you, our elected officials to research a solution that will flat, flatline the budget and prohibit yet another increase. Lastly, I'd like to reference briefly the concern for school safety following recent school shootings and how municipalities nationwide can benefit by receiving funds virtually intended for the construction of the border wall. I ask the town council to appoint a member on behalf of North Bradford and the taxpayers to propose to the government and the federal government that the $20 billion being proposed with this border wall be appropriated nationwide to all municipalities in the country to increase school security by retrofitting schools with bulletproof gap glass, locking entrance doors, and other endless safety measures as well as increased police presence. These efforts should not be executed based on political affiliation, but for the betterment of the town, the children of our community, and the many seniors, the many senior citizens residing in the town. Let us achieve our goals by doing and voting on things that are right, not because of political objectivity. Thank you very much.
I say, back. Teamway Pantani, 57 Notchell Road. At one time, I had the most expensive taxes in North Bradford. That was 40 years ago, when I purchased my residence for $125,000. Since that time, North Bradford has become a burden to me. I educated my younger children in North Bradford schools. I saw that they did their work, I saw that they performed well, and I saw that I sent my children to private school in high school, all except my older, my youngest son, who opted to go to North Bradford against the wishes of his parents. Since that time, I've watched, as Mr. Kaplan has said, my taxes have gone up and up and up and up. I don't know, but I'm a registered voter, I see the apathy in the voting, I see the apathy- apathy in coming to these meetings, I don't stay in North Bradford during winter, it's too expensive. I also would like to say that things could be cut back. You spend like sailors that have just got off on leave coming into the port. You have money that isn't yours, it's the taxpayers' money. Be more aware of, we are realizing that everybody is going to suffer. Maybe we should become more like Australians and charge people if they do not vote and if they are registered, a fee of $5. That's what happens in Australia. If they fail to do it two times, it goes up to $20. Perhaps if you hit the pocketbook, you make some money on those people that never come out to vote but are registered. I think the apathy of this town is registered when it comes to having a referendum. You don't offer them but one, like tonight, when you can come. Rather than, "How many people are going to turn out in the pouring rain?" Another thing is, I only come down because I'm always afraid that you are going to cut back the fire department, which is of great value to this town. Think if you had to pay a fire department. Great to have a police department, great, but the fire department is equally and very, very, what? More than the police department. Those people are relying to save lives, yes, but also they are volunteers. How wonderful to have a department that's volunteers. We can pay our chief, great, but you have to think of it, we are paying the bills, and because of the mismanagement of this state, we are even going to get hit even more so. I'm sorry. I thank Mr. Vincent Kaplan for being our representative. He has a great voice in Hartford, and I never wish it to be silenced. Thank you for your time. I reluctantly only think that you should cut back on, I know you were sorry and say, "Oh, we can't possibly cut back." I was brought up in World War II. You didn't get anything. You didn't even have pencils to put down on paper what was happening. I remember going to school and being bombed and machined and everything else, and believe me, these children are very, very well taken care of in North Bradford. And I am sorry that the mental health of this country has gone down so much that it allows other children to kill their classmates and other people who go as today, go out and randomly kill people. I'm very sorry about that, it's a shame. But on the other hand, I think our schools are well protected too. So I thank you for your time.
Liz Hossins, 43, David Lane. I'm here, as I am every year, in support of the board and budget. I'm in schools every day, and I see how resourceful our teachers are with limited budgets. I'm just asking you to keep it status quo so we don't have to let go of any more teachers or any more excellent staff that work above and beyond every day. I went through the school system, I'm proud to send my kids to North Bradford system, and I want to remain proud to send my kids to school here. I'm also hoping at some point, we have a plan for the high school. I recently told him, and I was blown away, that it's just becoming acceptable for students to be walking around the hallways, driven by kids to say "war." You know, I went to the high school 30 years ago, and not a single thing's changed, and I think the teachers are doing a great job there, but I think we need a plan for the high school at some point that needs to be addressed. So I'm here, probably here every year, you know, in support of our staff and our teachers that are working above and beyond with the limited budget that they have.
Good evening, my name's George Beermutter. Been a resident in town since 1984. Would have been really easy for me to stay home tonight, but I got myself out of the house to express my opinion. And it would take some money to operate a town and operate all the facilities and stuff, but I also believe that everybody should pay their fair share. I myself have been married twice. I liked it for several reasons, not to add any kids. I believe if you're going to have kids, you have added responsibilities that people that don't have kids should pay for. I also think if you have a large family, then you should be assessed for the kids you have going into school systems. It's like if you had a big house or expensive cars, you're going to be taxed and assessed appropriately on that. I also believe if someone's retired on a fixed budget, if somebody is disabled, if somebody doesn't have any kids in school anymore, I don't think it's right for them to still pay the burden for sending other kids to school. It seems like everything boils down to responsibility today with all this crazy stuff happening, and I believe it's all because of parents not taking responsibility for raising their kids right and doing their fair part for having kids. So I think if you need the extra money, that's where it should come from. I think it's fair. Another thing I want to address, which was mentioned, was the UI. I basically live with me and my wife. My electric bill last month was $400. This town is held hostage to the UI. If there's any way that we could possibly get electricity from another company like Wallingford Electric or any other means, I think we should look into it. That's all I got to say.
We look down out of the north for frequent flyer and town council meetings. You people show up once a year. You've got to see these town council people work every month, twice a month, once a month. They are a hard bunch of working people. They get it, but you can't run a town into the ground. Our town crew was working with dilapidated equipment, they're state-vanishing into sweet roads with a broken street sweep. You've got to tighten your belt, pay a little bit more taxes to keep the town if you love living in this town. I love living in this town. Do I want to pay more taxes? No. But I can't keep handcuffing these people where they can't give the departments what they need. They're not looking for fluff, they're looking for equipment that's not broken, they're looking for manpower to do the jobs. If you saw our town crew forming last week, he just about passed out of anguish because of the workload in front of him and the equipment and supplies he did not have to get the job done. Very sad. Our education system, that's the future of our town. You want to shortchange them, then you're going to shortchange your kids' education. Guess what? If your kids get a good education, they'll stay in town. Two of my children still live in town. They've got a good education. So again, if you like the town, you may not like the increase in taxes, but you've got to give these people the okay to keep doing a good job. And if you come to town council meetings, you can talk, and they'll listen, they want input from the citizens. They can't guess what's on your mind if you only show up once a year. You need to go to your town council meetings. If you're not happy, go unhappy, make unhappy comments, but they'll be heard. If you're happy, they'll be heard. They'll work with you. They're all volunteers, they don't get paid anything, they give up a lot of their own time. And so, I mean, you could beat up on them all you want, but you can't keep the job they're doing. So if you want to stay in North Bradford and you want to keep a quality town, you're going to have to take an increase in taxes, whether you like it or not. Our equipment's worn out, our people are tired. You've got great town employees who put in many hours for what they're paid for because they like this town. You'll see them after hours at functions because they like this town. So if you want to stay, you may have to pay. I don't know if that's a bumper sticker, if you want to see or not, but again, we can't cut, cut, cut. And you can't brag about how North Bradford's roads are all plowed nice and nice, and when you cross the town line, it's a further menace or someplace there now. You've got to give these people who want to give you service some funds to maintain that service. If you cut them, you're going to get what you didn't pay for.
I'm Jana Rathke, I'm in the 26th room of Triad North Bradford. I have a question about the mill rate, because I understand it's 34.97 whatever, but what about the mill rate for motor vehicles? This past year, it was 32. I would say the mill rate has the mill rate for real estate. So what is going to happen with the mill rate for motor vehicles?
Anthony, you want to address that?
It's all one mill rate. The cap is raised about 47, we're nowhere near that, so everything can be taxed at the same mill rate as usual.
Okay. So if that's the case, what you've done is you've raised the tax on motor vehicles by 9%, not 4.12 like government and real estate. So it's a little misleading, because it's going to be a much bigger tax increase than what's shown on your paper, and I think people should understand. I also think that you have to look more carefully at the line rate. I understand that the school system asks for more than they now are getting, according to the current proposal, but I'm also questioning why they need new positions. And I heard something about 47 less students. I may have misunderstood the exact number, but there are fewer students now, and yet they want more positions. So I would ask you to look at class sizes, if they have fewer, if they have fewer students, then the class sizes are already smaller. I'm not sure about raising all of these paraprofessionals to behavior technicians, I'm not sure what that means. I used to be a school psychologist, we didn't have all these different positions. It was a while ago, but, and I understand things change, but I don't think that we can just say, "Well, we need to raise these people to a different level," without really understanding the implications of doing so. So I guess that you take a look at the different school positions. I also have a question about the capital improvements or the capital expenditure. I understand that the roads need, roads need to be improved, it's kind of tough out there, but what do reserves mean for public works and for the fire department? What does $500,000 mean as far as reserves?
The reserves is, say, a question, $1 million to buy a, you know, a ladder truck. We put a reserve in each year, so eventually, it's like a little savings account, so eventually it'll build up where they can buy a fire truck where we don't have to fund it through a bond.
Okay, so what do we have in reserve now?
That reserve is put in every, basically every year. There's, you know, it's out of the budget. If they don't have to spend it this year, you know, it'd be $500,000 next year. But I don't think, yeah, there's nothing in reserve now.
There's nothing in reserve. So you're saying that should you need a fire truck, then you have, you set aside $250,000?
Right.
And when was the last time you got a fire truck? When do you expect you might need one?
Well, the fire chief is looking at refurbishing some trucks now, or we used them for an ambulance at one point, you know, some of that reserve funding, which was the ambulance reserve, they replaced an ambulance. Fire truck, we replaced fire trucks, I believe, last year, chief?
The average age of a fire truck in North Bradford is 22 years old. So if you look at standards, it's recommended that every 25 years, a fire truck, a pumper, be replaced. There's other recommendations that frame for 10 to 15 years. What you've got to understand is the cost of apparatus these days is astronomical, and we put a lot of money to prevent the maintenance and to keep those apparatus on the road. As we said, by the way, that savings account, so to speak, with the intent of building up an amount that when it's time for purchase is there, and thus does replace a significant burden on the taxpayers all at once. So again, you know, as stated by some of the counselors tonight, they're looking at ways to put together a plan that will diminish the impact over time on the taxpayer, and the equipment reserve is in the process of being, or suggested, to be rebuilt.
Company number three got a tank truck last year.
And the same concept applies to, like, capital for public works?
Yes.
Hello, my name is Amy Conrile, I'm in Caputo, right here in North Bradford. A few years ago, we actually left Middletown and moved here on purpose because of the amazing opportunity that's here. And in the three years that we've been here, we've been amazed at the improvements in the town, but also we've fallen more and more in love with the community, it's absolutely amazing. Any of us that have a home and have budgets know that costs go up, whether it's utilities, whether it's a tree falls down and you have to paint it, clean it, the whole thing that goes with part of it. You guys have the responsibility to be the parents of this town, and we trust you with that. As a parent who has a student in from Harrison, which is an amazing school system, I just want to say I definitely stand behind their budget and also the increases, because we're investing into our future. And the home values, everything are going to continue to go down or not increase if we don't invest in the things that attract people to move into this town. So I ask you guys to please support the budget as it stands, and also, if possible, include the increases so we can continue investing in our town and also in our education.
Teamway Pantani, 57 Notchell Road. One thing I want to say is, I appreciate the fire department, and that's really why I come, because I can't see us paying for a paid fire department. I realize that you can. I don't have a fire hydrant anywhere near my property. I have two ponds, which obviously would be used by a pumper truck if there was a fire anywhere on my property. I would like to say that I think they do an admirable job, and if it needs to be, and I give a donation to the fire department every year because I am so grateful to them. They are a wonderful bunch of people to give their time to this town. As for education, I was in education since 1956, and I finished in 2004, not in North Bradford school systems. And as far as I'm concerned, the teachers have come a long way. Yes, they deserve a living wage, but also, as a senior citizen myself, now on fixed income, pushing up the taxes is one thing that is horrendous. After this, and if the taxes and this bad budget is passed, you can say goodbye to the Pantani family, I will be gone, I cannot afford $15,000 a year in house taxes. Thank you.
I just, I want to say, I want to say something. The young lady that got on spoke about the fire department and the cost of the apparatus. Our chief, Chief Stewart, has gone out of his way, spent a lot of time trying to get a grant for a new ladder truck for the town. We ought to put up $50,000, the grant is worth almost a million, is that right, chief?